Welcome to the 2025 reorganization meeting of the Mawa Board of Education. My name is Thomas Lamb. I'm the Business Administrator Board Secretary. I'll be administering the meeting for the first couple of minutes until we elect a board president for this year. So I'm first going to read the public announcement. Adequate notice of the agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on January 8, 2025, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Please stand for the signature of the clerk. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business will be the oath of office for the newly elected board members. In this case, they are reelected, but they still take the oath of office again. So congratulations again to Trista Daveniero, Michael Gallo, and Benjamin Kizmarsky. We're going to ask you to go up one at a time alphabetically. If you have family or friends here who you'd like to come stand next to you, you may, or you administer it alone. It's your preference. So I'll get you to move to the right floor.
So coincidentally, the alphabetical order is also the same order.
By the ranking.
My oldest friend.
I was trying to get you off the floor. You could just raise your right hand and read the two paragraphs.
I, Trista Daveniero, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Trista Daveniero, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 194-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJS 18A12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Next, Mr. Gallo.
I, Michael Gallo, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Michael Gallo, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 194-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJS 18A12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. And for last.
I, Benjamin Kizmarsky, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Benjamin Kizmarsky, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 194-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJS 18A12-1, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Next order of business, we will do roll call of the Board of Education. I'm going to do a roll call alphabetically as well. Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Ms. Daveniero.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Ms. Janson.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Here.
Dr. Morton.
Here.
And our student representative, Ms. Kessberry.
Here.
Thank you. The next order of business will be to accept nominations for the position of board president.
Mr. Lamb, I'd like to nominate Dr. Morty as president.
Thank you, Mr. De Silva. We have a nomination for Dr. Morty. Do we have any other nominations? If we do not, we can, unless there are any objections, we can do a roll call vote. And you are allowed to vote for yourself, for president or vice president if you choose. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Janson.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
And Dr. Morton.
Yes.
Congratulations, Dr. Morton.
Thank you very much.
Turn the gavel over to Dr. Morton, or Board President.
Thank you. Good job. You can sit in any tone. All right. At this time, thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate it greatly. At this time, let us take our nominations for first vice president. Mr. Kizmarsky.
I would like to nominate Rick De Silva for vice president.
All right, there is a nomination on the floor. Do we have any other names being put forward at this time? All right, so Mr. Lamb, can we have a roll call vote on Mr. De Silva for first vice president?
Certainly. Roll call vote for Mr. De Silva for first vice president. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Janson.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Dr. Morton.
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. De Silva. All right, now we're going to take nominations for second vice president.
Dr. Morty, I'd like to nominate Mr. Kizmarsky for second vice president.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. De Silva, do we have any other names being put forward for second vice president? Okay. Mr. Kizmarsky? Very good. So, Mr. Lamb, can we do a roll call vote, please? We have Mr. Kizmarsky for second vice president.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Janson.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Dr. Morton.
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Kizmarsky. All right. Any board member remarks at this time? All right, I will take a minute to just thank everyone. I'm going to just say, first off, I'm humbled and grateful to be selected by my colleagues to serve another year as president of this amazing group of individuals. To have earned your trust and respect once again and to be given the opportunity to provide guidance and leadership to our board excites me tremendously. I also look forward to working cooperatively with our central office team, Dr. Detore, Dr. Fair, Dr. Bavino, Mr. Lamb, and Ms. Rizzo. Congratulations to my vice presidents, Mr. De Silva and Mr. Kizmarsky. My fellow board members, Janine Janson, Christopher Hughes, John Denise, and a hearty welcome back to our incumbents. Congratulations, Ms. Daveniero, Meister Gallo, and of course, Mr. Kizmarsky. I just want to also take a moment to truly thank each of you for your selfless dedication to what we do here and volunteering your time to be a board member. We have many years of experience in leadership on this board, which allows us to work very effectively and collaboratively for our district. There's a lot of exciting things happening in our district, and most importantly, we had our first strategic plan meeting in December, and that, I think, is really one of the guiding forces for us, the Strategic Plan 2.0, we're calling it, with meetings again in February and April. So again, thanks to everyone who participated and those who are coming forward. I'd also like to thank my husband, Jay, my wonderful children, Vinay and Ria, and my parents, Rodger and Leela, for their love and support of my volunteer endeavors. They have been very patient and understanding of what provides me with purpose in my life. So, a little advice for 2025 and for our year. Learn from yesterday, live for today, and hope for tomorrow. So thank you all to my fellow board members. I really appreciate it. Any other board member remarks before we go to our next meeting? Okay, very good. Public questions or comments? All right, public participation at board meetings is in accordance with File Law 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness. You're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you're here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Hughes. We are officially open to the public. Seeing no one coming forth at this time, I need a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, and second by Mr. Kizmarsky. All right, we have several appointments. Mr. Lamb, can I do those as, do we need a roll call vote on those and approvals?
The appointments, you do not.
Do not, okay? So we just accept those? I think we do. I think we owe. Okay. Yeah, so we do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I misunderstood you.
Okay.
Those appointments.
Yeah, okay.
I thought you meant fourth.
That's fine. No worries. So the appointments, these are of certain positions in our district. So we're going to take appointments one through nineteen. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve those? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Kizmarsky. Mr. Lamb, if we could have roll call, please.
Roll call vote on appointments one through nineteen.
Correct.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Janson.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Dr. Morton.
Yes. All right, and now we can take our approvals. That's one through nine, oh, eight, one through eight?
Dr. Morton, you can we take number eight separately?
As separately as our board member code of ethics. Okay, Mr. De Silva, thank you. So let's take our approvals one to seven. Do I have a motion on the floor? Ms. Ting Janson, and second by Mr. Copeland. Let's take approvals one through seven.
One through seven. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Janson.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Dr. Morton.
Yes. All right, now, as Mr. De Silva points out, we will take our approval of number eight. This is actually important. This is our board member code of ethics. So thank you, Mr. De Silva. We'll take that separately, and this is what all board members should remember in their day-to-day responsibilities as a board member. All right, so we'll take that as number eight separately. Do I have a motion on the floor? Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. De Silva.
Item A, board member ethics, roll call, Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Daveniero.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Janson.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Dr. Morton.
Yes. All right, now I need a motion to adjourn our reorganization meeting. Mr. Kizmarsky, and second by Mr. Copeland. We are officially adjourned, and now we will move on to our public action meeting of January 8. Ready, Mr. Lamb? Okay. So, this meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found in the agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. The webinar ID for this meeting through Zoom is 891-61989608, and the required password is 150192. All right, Mr. Lamb, let's call this meeting to order, please, and our roll call. Thank you.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Ms. Daveniero.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Ms. Janson.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Here.
Dr. Morton.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on January 8, 2025, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Salute to the flag. Ms. Daveniero is our highest vote getter in this last election. Perhaps you would like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ben, that'll be it.
Somehow I don't feel you.
At least for this meeting. All right, do we need an executive?
All right, so we don't need an executive session in the beginning, so let's move on to agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. It's a matter of fairness. You're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you're here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. All right, motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Denise, second by Ms. Ting Janson. All right, we are officially open to the public. All right, seeing no one coming forward at this time, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Gallo. All right, our student representative report this evening.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year as well. So this last week, we returned from winter break, and winter sports have been starting, and the games have been picking up. Many clubs and organizations are participating and giving back to the community before winter break, including Habitat for Humanity, who volunteered at the access for all of the sweater party. Robotics hosted their annual kickoff event. This year's game is called Reef Escape with an Ocean theme. We're excited to see what they come up with. MHS hosted their annual alumni panel with graduate speakers from the class of 2025 who spoke to current seniors about college life and advice. End of the second academic marking period is January 31. Half-year courses are preparing for their final exams. The talent show is this Friday, sponsored by the senior class at 7:00 PM in the Evans Auditorium. Many talented acts, please come out and support. And then our annual Hoops for Marcus game is approaching us on January 21 as it's a doubleheader game. And lastly, the SGA is selling Winter Spirit sets with a few executive items, including a sweatshirt designed by MHS Design Collective Club run by Ms. Lazar. If you are interested, I have some flyers which I will pass out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Detore, your report this evening.
Yes, so we have a number of things that we wanted to highlight that are taking part in the district. The first thing that we wanted to speak about was, as Dr. Morty spoke about, our first strategic plan meeting was a success. We had over seventy participants, whether it was administrators, board members, community members. We were able to talk about the strengths, but also the areas for growth within our district. We did send out a survey to the community, to our teachers, and to our students. As of right now, we have 352 responses, but we're going to send out a reminder because the survey will close, I believe it's January 17 or 18, but that will be all in the email that will send out by the end of this week. So please speak to your neighbors, spread the word as many responses as we can. We would love to gather information and feedback from all stakeholders within our community. Our next meeting is February 27. Please mark your calendar, please bring a pen, and more information will come on that. The next piece I wanted to talk about in our effort to continue to share the good word with our community is our second edition of the T-Bird Times. Well, it's in, it hit the printing press already, and we're hoping for it to get to the post office by Thursday or Friday this week, so please keep an eye out. We received some positive feedback the last time. This is an effort for us to spotlight the different schools all throughout our district and the wide variety of experiences that we're able to afford all of our students, whether it's academic, whether it's athletic, extracurricular, it doesn't matter. We really want to spotlight a wide variety. We also have a message from our board that will be present on our newsletter this time. So thank you, Dr. Morton. Our next is one of my favorite events. I know that Mr. Kizmarsky's favorite event is Mawa Day, which is absolutely phenomenal, and it's not a competition, but this is a great day too. It's more of an evening. It's more of an evening. The Mawa Schools Foundation, every single year, does so much for our schools, and we try our very best to get the word out because they can't do the things that they do without the support of our community. The gala is taking place on April 3. Tickets will be going on sale on February 6. This will be taking place at the Terrace in Paramus, and it is a wonderful event. They had Casino Night in the past, and it was tremendous. We're looking forward to that night yet again. So please come out on April 23, get your tickets on February 6. Tickets sell fast. Speaking of Mawa Schools Foundation, this is an experience that our students have been afforded because of the generosity of our Mawa Schools Foundation. Mawa High School had a Cricket Creations Holiday Boutique that our instructional committee was fortunate enough to take a field trip and experience for themselves. Our self-contained program, Mawa High School students created all the items using their cricket machine, all funded by a Mawa Schools grant. Students created everything from ornaments to oven mitts to Mawa swag. Another awesome holiday boutique. Special thanks to our students, as well as their teachers, Ms. Daly and Ms. Lee, along with the classroom paraprofessionals who assisted in those life skills connected to this type of work. So thank you to all. Our next, it's been a while, but we received another award, and I'm happy to share that with the Board of Education. The Mawa High School received the ITEEA, which is International Technology and Engineering Educators Association 2025 STEM School of Excellence. And this is what the letter entailed when they made us aware of this award. On behalf of the ITEEA and sponsor Siemens, we would like to congratulate you on your school's selection as an ITEEA 2425 STEM School of Excellence. You are joining an outstanding group of professionals impacting and making a significant difference in the lives of their students and their development of engineering and technology literacy. ITEEA, STEM Center for Teaching and Learning, annually recognizes outstanding schools for their commitment to providing robust, integrative STEM education experience through the STEM School of Excellence Recognition Program. This special designation was created to celebrate those schools whose teachers, administrators, and other stakeholders are providing a meaningful STEM education experience for students and to inspire others to learn effective best practices and instructional strategies to enhance their own programs. According to ITEEA announcement, our reviewers were particularly inspired by this highlight from your application. The Mawa Art Show was rebranded as the Mawa High School Visual Performing Arts and Integrated Design Festival. This festival features original student artwork, woodworking items, projects created by digital media, and our award-winning Calliope. I said it before the meeting, too. Literary magazine, a litany of technology and engineering projects, and live music performed by our award-winning marching band and orchestras. Hundreds of families from the community attended this festival and participated in a gallery walk. We will be recognized at their general session for their conference in St. Louis, Missouri, on Saturday, April 5, 2025. So congratulations to the high school for their continued commitment to this work. I'm very proud of all the things that they're doing and all the extensions outside of what we were committed to in the beginning. It continues to grow and develop over time. So congratulations to Mr. Pascal and his team at Mawa High School. Again, in our commitment to making sure that we get the word out and we continue to bring our students together and expose our middle school students to what they have to offer at Mawa High School, the Ramapo Ridge Engineering Club visited Mawa High School. On December 17, 2024, advisor Ms. Chung and the members of our new Empowering Future Engineering Club visited Mawa High School T3 building to meet with the officers of the robotics club. The Mawa High School club members provided our students with insights to the innovative facility, the club's activities, competitions, and the related future pathways program that our students could pursue. We are proud that we continue to foster that cross-school connection. Before we get to the last slide, something that's not on the agenda that will be on the next agenda, but I wanted to share with you now because it's very exciting news. Greg Romero is constantly looking at our grounds to see what he can do to continue to upgrade our grounds and the experience for our students. As we all know, the Ramapo Ridge athletic program continues to develop. Well, with that, we have to look at our facilities to make sure that they're up to snuff with the level of performance that they have provided to us. Now, if anyone's been to Ramapo Ridge Field, the scoreboard's not really ideal. So he was able to engage a company, and through his connections with that company and through Mr. Pelletier's connections with that company, the company is donating a scoreboard to us. Scoreboard and the installation of the scoreboard is all being donated by this company. So we're going through the specs of what that scoreboard's going to look like. Mr. Romero and his team are looking at the electrical going out to the scoreboard to make sure that it's still at the level it should be. But again, it's really exciting that these are the things that Mr. Romero is doing outside of all the other things that he's doing to make sure that our facilities are at the level that they are. So on our next agenda, you'll see a resolution to accept that donation. And last, but not least, for my presentation, I don't know if you know this, Remi, there are some fancy things in front of you. We're not good with secrets, so we just gave you the presents right off of that. January, if you do not know, is School Board Recognition Month for the state of New Jersey. You know, each week, we get a chance, both Dr. Fair and I have been committed to sharing with you and the community all of the great things that we're doing, whether it's academically, whether it's extracurricular, whether it's athletically, facilities-wise, you name it. We try to make sure that we have a broad reach of all the things that we are proud of here in Mawa, and I want you to understand that your time and your support is paramount in all of this work, and we greatly appreciate the commitment that you have to our district. So thank you to each and every one of you. So what we would like to do, Dr. Fair is going to read a resolution that we would like to add to this meeting's agenda.
So the resolution being passed around, I will read it aloud. So where New Jersey's public schools serve approximately 1.4 million children from pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, and whereas the direction of public education in New Jersey is charted locally by individual school boards whose 5,000 members serve as advocates for public education as they work with administrators, teachers, parents, and local residents, and whereas-
residents, and whereas boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the community, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectations toward the school district, and whereas school board members receive no remuneration for their services, and whereas the Mawa Public School District is justly proud of the academic, athletic, and social achievements of the students in our community, and whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January twenty twenty-five to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Mawa Public School District does hereby commend the service of the Mawa Township Board of Education and its members to our community and its children, and be it further resolved that the Mawa Public School District proclaims January twenty twenty-five as School Board Recognition Month in Mawa, New Jersey, and urges all citizens to join in recognizing the dedication of local school board members has been present as we work together to advance educational opportunities for our children. So thank you for all that you do for us and for our community.
Thank you very much. Um, do appreciate the recognition. Thank you. It's, uh, it is, as I said, everyone's a volunteer, so, um, and, uh, it's, it's important what we do, and, and thank you for taking this. Um, all right. Uh, Mr. Lam, do you have a report for us this evening?
Uh, sure. Short update. Uh, our, uh, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five audit, uh, is due next Wednesday, January fifteenth, so it is all but finished. We actually have a final conference call with our auditor tomorrow. Uh, the, uh, electronic, uh, part of the audit where the numbers are submitted is actually due to the state of New Jersey by January first, so we submit that in December, and, uh, shortly after the fifteenth, by the fourth next board meeting, you will receive a hard copy of the audit. And so we are here to get those results. And then, uh, the first of our RON grant projects, uh, for which the state's paying forty percent of the costs, we will be having a bid opening next week for the rooftop HVAC unit for Joyce Kilmer School, so we're looking forward to that next Wednesday. And so if the bids, uh, go well, we would have, uh, an award or a contract on our next, uh, board meeting's agenda. So looking forward with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lam. Um, it's also noted on the agenda that our committees will be established by the second board meeting in January as well. Just an FYI. All right, our assistant superintendent's report, Dr. Dr. Fair?
Yes.
Report this evening, of course, with, with, with photos?
Oh, of course, yes.
And video?
Uh, no video this last time around. So Dr. Di Toro had made mention of our robotics team of the high school. Um, the, this team will be competing-
Is this the team?
Yeah, so the team will be competing on Sa- Saturday, March eighth, at Mount Olive Regional High School, um, in first mid-Atlantic regional district robotics competition, which is led by advisor coaches, Mr. Montana, Ms. Schwartz, and parent volunteer, Mr. Wong. Uh, for those of you who were on the board years ago, um, that, that, uh, collective work was really sparked here in this, in this audience when Mr. Wong raised his hand and said, "I'm interested." So he's, he's been on board ever since. Uh, so we asked the community to come support Team One Six Seven Two on that day. They also have their own Instagram handle, so if you wanna check them out, they, um, are updating, uh, almost daily. So a little about, a little bit about the theme of this year's competition, uh, it's titled ReefScape, which tasks teams to compete by using engineering practices to harvest algae, seeding coral on their reef, and returning to their barge to ascend to the ocean's surface. Under strict rules, limited resources, and an intense six-week time limit, teams of students are challenged to raise funds, design a team brand, hone teamwork skills, and build and program industrial-sized robots to play a difficult field game against like-minded competitors. It's as close to real-world engineering as a student can get. Volunteer professional mentors lend their time and talents to guide each team, and each season ends with an exciting first championship. So if you, you haven't been, um, you really should check it out. Dr. Toro's son is like one of his favorite days of the year, so, um, and it's, it's intense. So like, the, the kids are in it, so, um, and, I mean, they truly battle. So you can see on the upper right, that image is obviously it's, um, computer-generated, but that's kind of what the setup will look like on that day.
Oh, of course.
I, I strongly suggest if you haven't to go to this, I don't know if you guys remember the old show, the Gladiators?
Yeah.
And you have everyone kind of up on, in the stands, and they're yelling down. It's the same thing. It, the, the energy at Mount Olive is so crazy, and the kids get so excited about it, and then the turn time of, after their first competition, they have to go back to the pit, and that's where Mr. Wong really comes into play, that he's working with them there as well. It's a, it's a great experience to see them, um, not only compete, but they're able to adjust and alter whatever they need to, depending on what breaks in between the different competitions. It's, it's fantastic, and to see the energies one.
I said there wasn't video, but here, here is. This is what, this is what it will look like. Right? Pretty cool.
And I think we have some new volunteers on the agenda today who are-
Yes.
Bringing on board.
It's great to see the size of the, the-
I feel like it's grown tremendously, right? I mean- That's amazing.
When we moved into the T-three, that space seemed pretty big.
Yeah.
And that would seem pretty tight.
And when they're in it, they're, they're using all parts of that-
Yeah, and they're adding it in the main area.
So, oh, this is a, this is T-four.
T-three, three-five.
Over at GW, uh, the month of January, uh, our students have been setting goals for twenty twenty-five. They're selecting meaningful words and identifying what those goals and words will look like in action for themselves. The attached picture highlights an example of our second-grade students thoughtfully setting their intentions for the year ahead. Uh, Betsy Ross School has just recently highlighted, uh, students based on social awareness in its, uh, monthly SEL Focus. Students participated in a read-aloud about gratitude and watched a video exploring the importance of kindness, empathy, and active listening. Teachers identified students who demonstrate outstanding social awareness in their daily interactions, and these students were celebrated during Betsy Ross School's morning meeting. And a shout-out to our school counselors, who play a, a huge role in, in our SEL work, along with our child study team and teachers. Uh, Joyce Kilmer School, um, I don't know if you saw this online, but it is, um, it was, I mean, I wish I had the video of this. Um, but this past Monday, JK had a school-wide academic pep rally, which inspired to excite kids about their ongoing work on iReady, our online program for reading and math, that helps our teachers determine students' needs and to subsequently personalize their learning based on the ongoing data received. Uh, you'll see here that the experience was filled with period games, and even a dance-off between the Mawa Thunderbird and Plory, which is the name of the iReady mascot. So it was awesome. It was awesome.
It's a dance-off. I thought the T-Bird would either take the other guy.
Well, no, but that's what it was. Yeah, it was-
Do we own that mascot costume?
Uh, our Thunderbird mascot.
Plory's on rent.
I was gonna say, because it looks a lot better than Thunderbird.
Yeah, that, that's gonna be a whole other-
We're working on that.
Um, if anyone was able to see the winter concert, um, the Mawa High School Band had a guest performer. Uh, the concert was obviously another beautiful success, but if you were able to attend, Mr. Pascal served as a guest performer, offering some of his skills in the percussion section.
Mr. Pascal will ultimately be a guest server at S U, who's it next week?
Yeah. I know, because he's in last year, too. He gets very-
It'll be this Friday before the township.
Yes.
There we go.
Yeah, four or five, I'd say. I think the township's at seven.
Yeah, yeah.
That's worth yelling.
Yep. Uh, and lastly, I, I know that, um, uh, few meetings ago, uh, we updated the board on, uh, our early action, uh, students who gained acceptance. Um, we have had, uh, thirty-three students from the class of twenty twenty-five earned acceptances from forty-three different colleges and universities. Um, ninety-eight students out of two hundred and three senior students have already gained acceptance to a hundred and twenty-four different colleges and universities. Um, there's been a total of two thousand one hundred and two applications which have been processed from October to December thus far, and, uh, we have an updated list of those college acceptances at your places. Um, obviously, when we get into the spring, uh, we will have a, a final list of student plans related to post-secondary schools and, um, and military and, and all of those good things. So, uh, we'll be able to share that with you in, in the months ahead. So congratulations to our seniors who've gained acceptance thus far. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fair. Excellent stuff. Um, all right, my report. Um, so first of all, congratulations to, um, all our board members for recognition as a school board. In fact, Ms. Jansen had sent me something about it being School Board, uh, Board Member Month, so thank you. Um, and again, as I said, we're all volunteers, and everyone devotes their time, and it is greatly appreciated. And I really appreciate working with, um, this group because we may have different ideas, we may sometimes disagree, but we're very cordial, respectful, we work well together, um, and I think we, um, you know, work well with our administrative team. So it's really a, a pleasure to work with all of you. Um, congratulations on our I T E E A award.
Thanks.
I feel like there's, there's a lot of, uh, you know-
Excitement.
There's a lot of acronyms too.
Yeah, that's a tough-
I D E A, I, do we have an I D E A one too at some point?
Well, that's a whole different-
That's a whole different acronym, right, Ms. Rizum? Anyway, um, congratulations to the team, because again, with these recognitions, it helps, um, especially helps for students to know what we're doing and, um, the important work that is happening, um, at our high school and in our middle school and in our high school. So thank you to all. Um, all right, that's all I have. I don't have much today. Welcome back, everyone, twenty twenty-five, and Happy New Year. Um, all right, board committee reports. Um, final reports from the twenty twenty-four year. Mr. Gallo? I'm not prepared either for instructional curriculum. All right, so I guess, uh, anyone? Any reports? Mr. Denise? All right, so we will, we will move on. Board member remarks. Any? All right, whoa. Mr. Gallo. All right, new business. Let's take A through- Well, what, Mr. Gallo?
I just wanted to thank the, uh, the public for their support in the past election. But more importantly, I also wanna thank each of you for your support over, over the years that I've been able to serve here. Um, it seems as though the work goes on and on, and it does. And every year, I mean, I've been, this is my fourth term now, and it's more than two. Um, I've seen market progress in key management, leadership, and achievement, uh, metrics for our district, and we have so, we have so much momentum going forward. And, um, with the team that we have and the, and the team that will be joining us over time, people coming go, um, I think we have something very special here in Mawa, and it's, it's due to each of you, but also obviously the leadership team, the people who lead our buildings, our supervisors, our teachers, down to our janitors, and bus drivers, nurses, and other support staff. Um, they really are all focused on one thing, and that is the betterment of our children and, and their futures. And that's really what makes this board highly effective, is because despite, as Prima mentioned, there may be some disagreements on approaches, on one thing, we are, there is no daylight on us between our, our support of children and their, and their learning experience. And, uh, that's really a hallmark of our board, it's the hallmark of our leadership team, and, um, it's, it's what, it's our foundation to go, to go further. So I really, I'm very proud to have been part of the organization. I look forward to another three years of service, as the second I have worked there.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. I think, are you, you, you must be our senior most-
No.
Mr. De Silva? Mr. De-
He's in the pension plan.
Because you, oh, because you just got elected. You're already, you were, uh, one year then ahead of Mr. Gallo? Two years? Look at that. How long did your father serve as an school board? Oh, you're beating De Silva records.
I don't think we're gonna beat the Pete Mudrickler's record.
Yeah, I don't know what that is. I don't know who he is.
It's like thirty-some years.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right. Well, anyway, thank you, Mr. Gallo. Anybody else? Any other? All right, then let's move on to new business. Uh, let's take twenty-two. We have A two- Okay, okay, A three K. All right, uh, motion on the floor for twenty-two A three K. Mr. Kizmarski, second by Ms. Ting Jansen. Uh, roll call vote, please. Mr. Lam?
Roll call on twenty-two A three K. Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. David Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except on twenty-two A, I'm sure there's something I have to thank on the debate, nothing more.
Whatever that may be.
There's, there's some check numbers.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Dr. Mordy?
Yes. All right, new business personnel. We have A through, let's see, on this one, P. Looks like A through P. All right. Okay. Uh, motion on the floor for twenty-three A through P. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Hughes. All right, roll call, please. Mr. Lam?
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, and thank you to all the volunteers.
Mr. David Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Uh, yeah, I don't know, um, wish Ms. Weenie luck in her future position she's gonna be, uh, as a chair staff. Uh, yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, and I echo Rick's comments on Ms. Weenie.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Um, yes, I am abstaining on either P, as it goes with the SRO and the township, but I wholeheartedly support the decision and the person.
Dr. Mordy?
Yes. All right, public questions or comments? Um, public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Bylaw oh-one-six-seven. This time, members of the public may ask questions or make comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. Uh, if you're here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. Motion to open the meeting to the public, Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Gallo. We are officially open to the public. Seeing no one coming forward at this time, motion to close the meeting to the public, Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Hughes, and we are closed now to the public. All right, I need a motion to recess to executive session. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Hughes, uh, and we will adjourn the meeting directly from our executive session. Thank you, everyone, and good night.